Supervisors meeting on this snowy evening, I'd like to call on Mr. Wilkinson to give a prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Lord Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with gratefulness. You have continually blessed us all for our entire existence, and for that, we are so thankful. Mecklenburg County has been blessed tremendously, and we are so proud of the place that we get to call home. With this being said, we know that we need to fully lean into you for guidance and direction. Most of our world has strayed from you, and we know that our only hope is to come back to you. Please grant us the wisdom and desire to do just that. Now, as we conduct the business in Mecklenburg County, please let us do so in a way that is beneficial to our citizens, but more importantly, pleasing in your eyes. I ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting, you all to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everyone has had a chance to look at the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Hope everyone has looked at our meeting, uh, minutes from the November meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Lucky, I believe you're up with some zoning applications.
Absolutely. Good evening. We received an special exception permit request from Wen Kwion for two yurts for recreational use. His property is located, parcel of record number 26488. It's zoned agricultural. It's on the east side of Young Road. He's got 121 acres. This is in election district seven.
Okay. That is my district. I will ask the applicant if he's here, if he'd like to speak. Hearing no one, I will now open the public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. I'd like to make the motion for approval on this application. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. The next special exception permit application is from Christie Wilson. It's for a nail salon on her property. The property is identified as parcel of record number 38527. It's zoned agricultural. It's located on the north side of Route 695, Philbeck Crossroad. Approximately half mile east of the intersection with Route 278, Antlers Road. It's in election district eight.
Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this application, please come forward. Hearing no one, I will now open the public hearing on the application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, district eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept this application.
Motion's been made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you.
The next request is a rezone for Vulcan Land Incorporated as to rezone from agricultural to industrial M1 for mining facility. This property, the parcel number is 40134. It's currently zoned agricultural. The planning commission voted to approve, or they recommended approval of this application.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this application, please come forward.
I knew you were getting off too easy, huh?
I did.
In the words of the Four Seasons, oh, what a night. It's a pleasure to be in front of you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And members of the board. I represent Vulcan Materials. I'm Jimmy Butts from the firm of Butts and Butts in South Hill. I represent Vulcan Materials for the rezoning. I'd like to introduce, if I may, part of the Vulcan team that's here. John Taylor, who is the area operations manager. Chris Dorman, who is the plant manager here in Mecklenburg. Ryan Manley, who is drilling and blasting manager. And from Winston-Salem, Dennis Hallett, who is community and government relations. For over 40 years, Vulcan has occupied, or has worked in the county of Mecklenburg, and has been a responsible neighbor. You have in your information petitions by a number of citizens, both locally and from other areas, who are in support of this. This is a small expansion, 56 acres, that is immediately adjacent to the existing facility. The expansion is for quarrying only, that is, mining the rock. All of the operations will continue to be conducted on the area in which operations are done now. I believe some of you may have had the opportunity to visit the quarry recently, when they had an open house, and you can see, it's quite an operation. Vulcan has contributed, by their estimate, about $21 million annually to our community. They have a payroll of some 35, and are making an additional investment of approximately $19 million in quarrying operations and facilities. The rezoning, as I said, is an adjacent piece. It will require no new entrance, because the commercial entrance that serves the quarry now will serve this expanded use. It does not anticipate any increase of traffic. It's just future demand. As you know, a quarry requires so many permits, I won't go into it, but it takes about two years or so to complete all the federal and state requirements. The zoning is the first question. I don't want to belabor the points. I think the zoning allows Vulcan to expand for a number of years, and it has very little impact on the community, other than what the quarry already does. And we would suggest that that's favorable. John Taylor is here. If you have any technical questions, I can't answer them, but he can. If you would like, I'll have him come up here and answer any of those questions. If not, I'll leave it at this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the application. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. I believe Mr. Wilkinson has a statement that is in his district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My family rents land from Vulcan Materials. I do not think this creates a conflict under Virginia law, which would prevent me from voting on this evening's rezoning application. However, even if there is no conflict under Virginia law, to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I will abstain voting on Vulcan Materials rezoning application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. I'll entertain a motion to approve this zoning application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve this application for Vulcan Materials.
Okay. Everyone heard the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Lucky?
Okay. The next application is a rezone request from Diane Lane. Her property is currently zoned industrial M1, and they would like to rezone it to R2, to put one camper, camper site on the property. The parcel record number is 15149, and this is in election district three. The planning commission recommended approval of this project.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing no one, I will open the public hearing for this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. District three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve this application with the recommendations of the planning commission.
Okay. The motion's been made with the recommendations of the planning commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. New business. Alex, I think I'm going to let you handle this one with the Madison Street property.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Currently, Mecklenburg County owns 401 Madison Street over here on the corner next to the 911 Center. It's a white building, about two stories. This building was originally the sheriff's office and county jail. In 1960 or so, the new, what was then the new jail behind it was opened, and this eventually in 1962 was closed. In 1966 was declared surplus and sold to private operators. It remained a private building until after the fire in this building, in which case the county initially rented and then purchased it back to house the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. It's been several other county functions since, but has been dormant in the last few years, functioning only as a storage unit. And so, at this time, it is better suited to be in private hands with somebody who has a great vision for this building that would make it more usable, better for the Boydun community, and better for the tax base of both the town and the county. In October, the property committee considered this item and recommended to proceed with disposal of the property through the means of an auctioneer. In your packet, there is a resolution that would assign this to United Auctioneers, and that's the method that we propose to dispose of the property should you find that to be favorable this evening. That will commence sometime probably in late January, potentially early February, but that's at the discretion of the auctioneer and firm.
Okay. So everyone's heard the background? Anyone? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution that is in our packet.
Motion to approve resolution.
Well, we need to have a public hearing.
Public hearing. We do need to have the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now on selling this property. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Wilkinson?
Motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the motion carries. Okay. Robin, you want to give our financial report?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess it's, oh, boy, snowy night. Okay, so y'all will be getting bound copies. I think everybody got a PDF. Maybe it's, you know, we were down to the deadline on this. We were hoping, we wanted to get it on by this board meeting, because it's due to the Audit of Public Accounts on the 15th of December. So we wanted to make that deadline with the board meeting, having been presented, been presented to the board. So we've done, made it, but we didn't get all the copies made today, because nobody was there with the snow and everything. So, um, anyway, I will start with a couple of pages. I'm not going through the whole thing for sure. So, um, so our audit was done in accordance with all the government auditing standards, standards of auditing for the whole United States. We follow the auditing standards for the Audit of Public Accounts and for the state of Virginia, and we followed all governmental accounting standards in the United States to present the audit, and we have found no material problems with the audit, no internal control problems with the county's financial situation. So that is actually on the very last page, on page 144, recaps basically what I said, that the audit was what we call unmodified, which says that there was nothing wrong. That's what unmodified means. There were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no non-compliance areas. And that also covers the federal awards section, which is your federal money. And again, no, no things were identified there that were a problem. Y'all are considered a low-risk auditing, and we have no matters that we had to report. That is basically what the last page of the audit states. So going back, I'm just going to highlight a few numbers in the audit. Exhibit three on page 11 shows your total cash position at the end of the year on June 30th, '25, around $129.7 million. Your fund balance total was $127.6 million. So the difference is that $3 million in liabilities and, well, actually, $8 million with the deferred liabilities and the total liabilities. So that's a great, is a net position to be in. Net fund, the fund balance position is strong. Now, of that fund balance, a lot of it is either restricted by where the money came from and has to be spent. You also have some money committed that the board has decided to assign, or commit to projects, and we have, you have an assigned fund balance. So each level of fund balance is a little more, well, one's restricted and one's assigned. It's, y'all can move money around at the assigned level, because that's a board decision. At restricted level, that's a legal outside third-party restriction. And so your total unassigned fund balance that has no designations for it is around $25.4 million. And all that's on page 11, exhibit three. So that's how your fund balance ended at the end of the year. Looking at the, hey, your revenues over your expenditures came out. You had revenues of around 100, this is all funds. The general fund was 100 million. All funds were 142 million for total revenues. Total expenditures for the general fund was 66 million, and total all governmental funds was 124 million. So your net change in fund balance, if you want to say that's your profit or loss, they call it net change in fund balance for governmental, was around 7.5 million for the general fund, for all the funds, which includes all the funds listed on page 13 across the top, which is capital outlay, economic development, your public assistance, social services fund, capital and capital projects, your AWPer fund, and then a lot of miss, small miscellaneous funds. All those funds, plus the general fund, you had an excess or net change in fund balance of a positive 17.8 million. Again, that's on page 13. So that's a strong increase in fund balance for the year as well. So they're your main things you, you know, you should be concerned about. Then we have the notes to the financial statement, starts on page 17, and it goes all the way to page... Page 89. So 17 to 89 is verbiage about the numbers, verbiage about accounting and auditing principles and that kind of thing. A lot of it's your Virginia retirement system, participation in that for life, group life, and your retirement plan. So that's a lot of what the notes are. One note you might want to look at in particular are your capital assets. This is where you've had a lot of capital projects this year. This was the year of the capital projects. You had schools going on. You had the new addition to the Goode Building going on, and all some other ones too. So there's a lot of capital assets purchased, and this schedule on page 36 of capital assets shows your increase. And, you know, we capitalize that money for audit purposes. We, I know you call it capital outlay in your normal month-to-month statements, but for audit purposes, we capitalize that and depreciate it. So that's on page 36. Your debt schedule is, you may want to take a look at that. That's on pages 39 and 40. That shows your payments on your long-term debt. And so your long-term debt was around $133.4 million at the end of the year. And that includes compensated absences and the landfill obligation too. So the total debt just with financial institutions was around 126 million. But we have to put the landfill and compensated absences in the long-term debt schedule as well. So there are your big numbers that make up the audit. Like I said, there's a lot of notes. There is a computation of legal debt compliance you could take a look at. That's in good shape. But it takes your total assessed value of real estate and subtracts what debt you have and gives you an amount of more debt you can borrow. But it's in the positive. I don't know exactly which page that's on. In the back of the audit is what we call required supplementary, supplementary information. That's your budget to actual schedules. There's a little bit of a change in this schedule this year. A new accounting standard requires us to put a variance between the actual budget and the appropriated budget during the year. So you'll see a lot of, that's a new column. You wouldn't see that in last year's audit. We also have to put a variance with the final budget versus the actual dollars. So that, that schedule's kind of a little bit bigger than last year. And then you've got just trend information over a 10-year period for a lot of the retirement information that's required. That's what a lot of these schedules are, where you see the 10-year trend information. A lot of pages on that. And then in the back of the audit, you've got your school board reports. Pages 124. Schedule six is the beginning of your school board reports, because they're a component unit of the county. And then a few more budget schedules, and then that's pretty much, your IDA is back there. As the information for the IDA is reported in the back on schedule nine, page 1131, because that's also a component unit of the county. And they have to be reported separately as a component unit. And that's pretty much it. Then we go back, and we're back at the last page where it shows the results of the audit that I started with. So there's a lot of numbers, but everything was good. I want to, staff was really helpful, kept everything in order. I appreciate all their help. Administrator's office, the treasurer's office, social services, the school board, and sheriff's office. There's a lot of other departments helped us as well and provided information that we needed to get this done. Seems like it's more requirements every year, but that's the way of the world. Any questions? I know you didn't have a chance to really look at it, but if y'all ever want me to come back, you know, to another, a session or a planning session or anything, I'd be glad to. I want to know more detail with this type of thing, because you can't cover it all at a board meeting. But the county's in good shape. No findings, and everything was clean, what we call a clean audit.
Very good. Lot of, you said a lot of numbers. I'd say a lot of good numbers.
Yeah, good. That's true. It is good numbers.
Lot of good numbers.
Yep.
Yeah, but thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Alex, you got anything you want to add?
Not much more, other than, you know, I appreciate all the staff work to, you know, assist in this project. And then the, the one number I did want to, you know, mention there is that, that unassigned fund balance that she referenced, that's really crucial for us to have a good, healthy number there, because that's what protects us. That is, we can draw on that at any time. If there was ever, you know, a reverse financial situation going on, that would be where we would pull from first. And right now, as a percentage of next year's revenues, although at this point's, you know, our current fiscal year, we're up to 23%. So we're in great shape. The GFOA's recommendation for most local governments is 8 to 12%. The Commonwealth of Virginia actually has a constitutional limit, and they trended a little bit higher. They, they did some magic work the last few years, but the max they've ever had was 20% as a legal limit. Generally, they trend around 15%. And actually, they're, they're, they're in their healthiest spot ever as well, and they're kind of at the maximum. But we're exceeding even the Commonwealth of Virginia on that front. So, you know, we're really protecting ourselves well.
23% of the budget is that, or the total revenue?
Of the total revenue, so for the FY '26 revenue, we have 23% of the FY '26 revenue in hand without a purpose, ready to go if we weren't to meet those revenue goals. So we can, you know, we could have a pretty significant...
.4 billion right now.
So we could have a pretty significant downturn, not that we ever want anything along those... along those lines, but should that materialize, we would have a lot of room to run in order to protect the commitments that we've made.
Good. Very good. Anybody else have anything on the budget?
Great comment.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Mr. Brinkley, Legislative Committee report.
The Legislative Committee met on Monday, December the eighth, twenty twenty-five, at five P M. in the Board of Supervised Meeting Room, Board in Virginia. Members present, David Brinkley, Chairman, Dennis Spence, Andy Hargrove, virtual. Others present, Jim Jennings, Sterling Wilkerson, Brenda Blackwell, Tom Tanner, Kirk Grabit, Lucky Carson, Planner, Alex, Planner, Alex Scott, County Administrator, Judy Sheffield, Assistant County Administrator, and Junior Whittemore, Clerk. Chairman Brinkley called the meeting to order. Rachel Foxton and Michael Callahan with Three TP Ventures attended virtually and presented the first draft of the zoning subdivision orders, development standard, and zoning map to the committee. Mr. Foxton advised the committee that the final draft may be ready in January with hopes of having more community input before the public hearing begins. There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. I don't see Mr. Rogers here, so I don't know if we're gonna have a B. dot report or not. No. You, you want, you want to give one?
There's two.
I'm sure, I'm sure. All right. We got anybody signed up for public comment? Alex, you want to go next, I guess?
Sure. So we got a couple items for your consideration. The first item is approval of the board's twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. The proposal that is in front of you preserves the current format and carries it forward into twenty twenty-six, so that would be the second Monday of each month with the exception of October, which is the second Tuesday, the same nine-thirty, seven o'clock schedule. The only note I put in here was just to think about, there's a possibility for November, you know, we meet that first Monday in November because of VACO. We could also meet the third Monday instead of the first Monday. That would, if, if that was done, that would just allow more time for us to build a heftier November agenda. And I did want to note that that is not unprecedented in Mecklenburg County. I went back to nineteen seventy and found fifteen instances where that was actually the meeting date that was selected. So that's just something to think about, whether it's this year or future year, but I wanted to put that note out there.
So, but for this next year, we would have been approving the first Monday in November, right?
That's what's in the proposal. If you wanted to amend that proposal, you could do it right now. Or you could do it right now.
Oh, you can do it right now. I mean, that's up to the board members. I don't, I'm gonna come to the meeting whenever it is anyway, so. Here, everybody's input.
Well, we moved the planning commission meetings up a week, so this still works good with what we had.
That's right. For, for planning and zoning, now the advertising requirements for planning and zoning matters and for other matters like ordinance amendments and the like is actually different. So planning and zoning allows you, this is a change the General Assembly made this year. They've made changes in the last three sessions to advertisement laws, which is kind of what's driving a lot of confusion around things. But right now, the planning and zoning matters, we can advertise five days before the meeting for that second ad, which allows us to hit a Wednesday publication schedule for a Monday meeting, whereas for ordinances and other ones, it's a seven-day one. So we can't get that Wednesday advertisement in, and so then that backs it up further. So that means that with the difference of schedule between the October meeting being late and then the November being, meeting being early, unless we had something that was being worked on for, you know, months and months and months, it's very unlikely that if something was to pop up anew in October, we would have it ready for a early November board meeting. So that's the only reason that, you know, I thought about this possibility. Either option would be suitable and would work fine. It was just something that came to my mind and when I went back and looked, found that, oh, we actually have some historical precedent for that, so it wouldn't be, you know, something that was totally out of the blue, so.
I'm amazed you look back that far, so I'm impressed with that. You know, I guess as far as the timeframes go, if you have it on the first Monday, you got three weeks between the October meeting and the, and that meeting. If you go to the, the date you were talking about, you got five weeks, but then you got three weeks from that date to the December meeting. So it's kind of a toss-up with me. It's what I, what I was most efficient, good for everybody and staff is kind of how I look at it. I don't know that, what, I would endorse either one, it doesn't matter. Just leave it, I think. Just leave it like it is.
Okay.
That way you ain't gonna reprint them.
Yeah, so then we would just need a motion at this point to adopt the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six with the dates included.
Entertain a motion.
Somebody, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman made a motion, all in paper say aye. Those oppose, the motion carries.
The next item we have is the adoption of the twenty twenty-six Mecklenburg County holiday schedule. Traditionally, we have conformed to the Commonwealth's holiday schedule. That is listed here in this attachment. The one thing I did want to point out with this one is the Virginia calendar occasionally has some variation in it and sometimes it benefits us, sometimes it's negative to us. This particular, if you're looking twenty-five to twenty-six, there's actually four less hours in twenty-six than there is in twenty-five, and that's kind of how the Christmas holiday falls on the schedule. So that is a note I did want to point out, but otherwise, the, the information in here presented is the same schedule that is used by DHRM for Commonwealth employees and is the same holiday, number of holidays, if the day, if the hour's a little different, number of holidays are the same as, as current, you know, the current practice for this year.
Okay. You know, I would like to bring up one thing, and I haven't mentioned it to anybody, to be perfectly honest with you, and some people probably will be surprised when they hear this coming from me, but, you know, the federal government throws out holidays like candy and a Christmas parade, in my opinion, but that, that's what they do and we are here to them and all that. And I know last January, when we approved this, it was in January, that, you know, we talked about some of these holidays and that kind of thing, but I'm amazed that the federal government gives Christmas Day, but they don't give Good Friday. And I think it should be a holiday for the employees. And I will say that, I think we need to add Good Friday, but I think it needs to be contingent upon if we have no more than two snow days prior to April the third this year, which is Good Friday. Does anybody want to give any input on that?
I think that's a great idea.
I'm not hearing any, any from staff, but.
Well, I don't...
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, just as a technical question, how are we, how are we computing days with respect to snow?
Well, it starts in January. That starts in January, not, you know, this is kind of an oddball situation we have right here in December. Rarely do you get days you miss in December from snow. So I, I bet you, since I've been here, I can't, maybe one or two in twenty-five years, but usually you don't, that doesn't matter in, in December. So that would actually start from January to Good Fridays on April third. And the reason I said that is because we missed, we've, I don't think counted today, but I know we've missed three snow days before today, and you're gonna miss some tomorrow, you may miss the whole day. I don't know the way things look. So, you know, just contingent, you know, if you miss more than two snow days, I think that's fair to the county, I think it's fair to the employees. If you miss more than two snow days, you don't get Good Friday. If you don't miss any snow days, you get Good Friday. It's just, it's, it's not rocket science, so. Can you give them something else and switch things around? I've always thought it needed to be a holiday. You know, the federal government recognizes the birth of Christ, but it doesn't recognize the crucifixion of Christ, which is not understandable to me, but...
Are you with me on that?
Well, I mean, I feel strongly too, in a full day, and I just want to do, you even need to put stipulations on it. We're not putting stipulations on any others.
Well, yeah, and I, and I see that, but, you know, you know, we got, we've got jobs to do over here, and you miss a snow day, that's a, that's a job that got compressed somewhere else.
Have we actually missed any full days?
You missed three.
Was it all hot?
No, you missed three last year that I remember.
We, we had a day in, we definitely had a day in January where the power was out and we...
No, I was saying with snow, I think you missed three.
No, it was during a winter's event where it's eleven degrees and the, the power knocked out, so then we, you know, nixed that day for sure.
I mean, I'm open to the, what the board thinks. If y'all don't think it should be contingent upon that, that's fine. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of like, well, there are a whole lot of holidays in the calendar, and I think any employee would admit that.
Because I couldn't even remember the three we missed. I remember the day, I mean, you just have to write them down.
I mean, we can go find, we can find that, but.
Yeah. We can keep up with that one.
Just give it to them. Just add, add that Friday. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion been ma- what, what, motion's been made, any more discussion? Any more discussion?
From us? Oh, I thought it was like...
Kirk, Kirk made it.
With no limits on snow days.
No limits, just Good Friday.
I think it's pretty important trying to get the best.
Been working on it for years.
Well, I'll put it to you this way, though, what do you get the more important to do?
Thank you, I think that's very, very nice. Thank you very much.
Well, let's vote on the motion. All in paper say aye. Motion carries. It made everybody happy. Yeah.
Your Mr. Grabit having a vote.
See, Mr. Grabit, will we read your book of records? Okay, let's see right here now. He, he did vote on that.
All right, so then the next item we have, we've got a series of easements. So the town of South Hill and, and the county really are, are working in conjunction on some of these projects to expand water and wastewater lines in certain areas in, around the town of South Hill. But this, but South Hill's handling the administrative part of this, so they need an easement from us in order to run these lines, and they go across three different properties. Russell and I have worked with the town's attorney to craft language that is suitable to us, that protects our property, but also advances these very critical projects that we as a county and you as a board have assented to. So, you know, we need motions to grant those easements in order to help advance these projects.
Okay. Everybody's heard the request. Anybody want to make that motion?
Mr. Travis will move.
Okay, the motion's been made, all in paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Do we take those in a block right there? We do each one individually?
I, I think it's fine to do it all together.
Okay, all right.
The next easement has to do with the development of the Public Safety Building. The way the power line currently runs, it runs right through the site that's going to be disturbed, and so we need to run a new power line and remove the current one. In order to do that work, Dominion requests an easement from us to, to proceed, and so we would like to have that in order to advance that part of the project. We won't be able to commence the, the actual construction or site work of, of that area until the power is moved, and the Hudgens Building has the opportunity to remain on power, so this is, this is a, one we certainly could use. We will, I will say that if, when you approve it, I would suggest you do it at the, with the conditional that it meets the approval of the county attorney, because Russell has not yet reviewed this. We got this on Friday, so.
Okay, so be contingent upon that.
Yep.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that it be contingent upon the county attorney's review.
Okay, everyone heard the motion, all in paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries.
We have the normal customary series of staff reports and some other information. One I wanted to highlight here, we did receive the invitation from the NAACP's Mecklenburg branch regarding the celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. That banquet is scheduled for January the nineteenth at the Catholic Church in South Hill, so that is something that they would like you all to attend if you're able to.
Okay. And I noticed you hired some more people.
Yes, the sheriff's office onboarded two, EMS onboarded a couple, including somebody with a wealth of experience in the Dinwiddie system, who's a Mecklenburg County native, so I know Justin's excited to have that one onboard, so we're, we're progressing.
Good, good, good enough. That it?
That is it for me.
All right, good job. So we got the consent calendar. Haven't got Mr. Hargrove here, so I'm gonna need a motion.
We, we go to the next senior.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve the consent calendar, all in paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Mr. Grabit, you want to go first?
I can, I can. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you everybody for the meal, Merry Christmas to everybody, drive home safe, good another, another year in the books, see you next month.
If it don't snow.
If it don't snow.
Well, okay.
That don't stop us, do it.
No.
Are you done?
That's it?
Ms. Blackwell?
This year has been a very good one for Mecklenburg County. A lot has been accomplished, and I'm sure that twenty-six we will continue. A merry and blessed Christmas to everyone, safe travels, travels home, and I hope you will have a very blessed Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell. Mr. Wilkerson?
That's pretty much exactly what I was saying. We should all be grateful for a good, clean audit. You know, to be able to do these capital projects and all that we do is just unheard of. I don't think people really realize how blessed we are. You know, as I said in my prayer tonight, we should really be thankful for that, so Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Spence?
I might too, want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, a safe holiday. Just one thing I want to bring up is, in, as we go forward with these convenience centers, some of them are gonna need some upgrading, some repairs, that type of thing. Do we already have a plan in place?
Yes, we do. We, we have, for both the convenience center in Chase City as well as the one in South Hill, we do have plans in place to upgrade them. We are working on expanding the one, acquiring the land to expand the one in Chase City, because that was the first one we did, so that was, that's definitely a constrained site, but we are looking to be able to provide the level of service there that we provide in these subsequent ones. On Wayside, we are definitely intending to pave the parking lot there, and so that will...
That's the one in Portview.
Yeah, that's right. And so that would remove some of the gravel area. We're also gonna end up putting in compactors. So compactors are gonna be, come in a bracy first, and then once they are successful there, we will then roll those into other sites as well, and Wayside will be among them. So we are certainly going back and retrofitting some of the earlier design models in order to accommodate these later features. Every time we build one, we add new things and tweak the design and make it better, so yes, that is in the works.
Yeah, I mentioned that because the one, the one there in Portview is having some erosion issues in the lot, and so I think what you described was all of it.
That's all of us, Chair. Okay, thank you. Mr. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, I'm glad to be back home. I'm glad to be back in this building. I think everybody is, it looks beautiful. Thank you to the staff, all y'all's hard work. You, you picked out great colors, great everything, and it just looks wonderful, and I know y'all are excited because y'all got a lot more room than you had. Also, too, Jason on the meal tonight, he always does a great job going and penciling him in for next year. We gotta keep him on the calendar, too. I want to thank all our employees, too. Here at Christmas time, I know we have employees, the sheriff's office, EMS, all our fire volunteers, nine-one-one, all of those still have to work through the holidays and the landfill folks too. I know this time of year they cringe every, every holiday because they're gonna be busy too, but really want to thank them and all of our employees for all of their hard work through the year. And we mentioned the, the reports we had, and then I hope... And we mentioned the, the reports we had, and then I hope everybody will go read the EMS one, but, uh, one of the big things that jumped out at me that was in it was because of the investment that this board made in salaries, and especially with EMS. It said in there, last year, October 2024, we had three paramedics on staff. As of October of '25, we have 14. So just the level of care we are providing to the citizens of this county has gone up tremendously. And, uh, Justin, you're doing a great job, uh, even if I do send you text and all hours and everything else, but. But, um, I think we're excited about where we're going with that, and I think we're doing a good job with it. Alex, I know your time of year is coming up with the general assembly getting ready to come in, so you'll keep us up to date with all of that, and, um, and I'm also excited, they finally broke ground on some apartments in La Crosse, so La Crosse is moving up. Glad to see Tony Hayes and them finally moving forward with that project, so hopefully it'll help the town. Grow, so, um, but that's about all I have. Mr. Chairman, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Well, I think everybody covered everything, I just hope everybody have a very blessed holiday and a very Merry Christmas. That's all, that's all I got.
I'm same way, I think everybody's covered everything good. I did want to bring up one thing, uh, um, I want to remember a resolution in honor of, uh, Ms. Virginia Bell, who passed away at 111 years old. Uh, we had a resolution for her, so I just wanted to, uh, mention that she lives in my district. Not too, I guess you could say not too far from where I live, but anyway, we are, what a, what a life well-lived. We should all be so fortunate, but anyway, I did want to mention her. I know, uh, we didn't have a VDOT report tonight, but, uh, we need to get the word to Mr. Rogers that the, like, the lines on 47 really have faded, you can't hardly see where the passer zones are and where they're not. Uh, some people I don't think care where they are, the way they drive on that road. I'm sure the sheriff's department knows all about that. But anyway, um, we can get that message to him in January, I'm sure, but.
Well, I, I'll certainly communicate to him, that to him, you know.
If you would, if you would.
As soon as the weather event is over.
It may be in schedule, it may not be, uh, if it's not in schedule, we need to maybe help him decide to get it in schedule. For lack of better words. I guess everybody saw the business call that's, uh, at your table, so that's Merry Christmas to us from the county. Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, real quick for me, Jeremy, if you're going back 707 Phyllis Road, I came that way tonight. I'm not going back that way. So it was much worse than I expected.
You mean the snow on the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Real slip, I mean, the ground, like, sometimes I feel the vehicle just pulling down the ground, so. Heads up, you're going that way.
Be careful going home.
Yeah, please do, thank you. Uh, other than that, that's all I have for, anybody else, Judy?
No, I thank y'all for all your support, it's been a good year, and I look forward to next year. Merry Christmas.
All right, Jenny? You good?
Merry Christmas, everybody, I can't wait.
All right, Merry.
If anybody needs a ride, Justin will do it.
Merry Christmas to everybody. I, I went, I went two minutes over 45 minutes, so we're good. I'm in, uh, standing.